Good evening, I call to order the city council regular meeting. May we please have roll call?
Mayor Garrett?
Here.
Councilman Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Canes?
Here.
Councilmember Miller's here.
Madam Mary.
Thank you, and I invite everyone that's in the audience and on Zoom to say the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before we approve the agenda, I'll take a motion to excuse Councilman Cantor.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Cantor?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, roll call please, or three yes?
Or?
Your roll call is?
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now I have the approval of the agenda, please.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion surrounding the approval? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Thank you. And next, we are coming to the public comment for items that's on the agenda. You have three minutes to speak. If there's anyone that is on Zoom, you may raise your hand or come on camera. If there's anyone that's in the audience.
We just wanted about the special assessment.
No, that got pulled because the notice has, the resolution needed to be sent from the attorneys. We did not get that. That will be on for next month.
No public comment, we're going to the consent agenda. Um, we need the approval of this consent agenda, or the motion, excuse me.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Wait a second, but I'd like to hold D.
Is there anything else? Okay, so it's been moved to second, is there any discussion? There's no discussion. You have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. And we will go back to the consent agenda number, my alphabet letter B.
I guess just a few things. Scott Baker's bill was paid for July, but there was no copy of this invoice in our packet. What's the, in last month's packet?
But paid this month?
Correct. Okay. Okay, how are we supposed to know that?
It was by ear, it was put in last month's package and paid.
Any of the pages. Okay, alright, thank you. Um, there is a charge for $735.
Could you please give us the page number?
I don't have the page numbers because I printed it out.
It's up at the top.
It's this page two of the
spreadsheet?
Page two of the, um, the, I mean, of the spreadsheet report. Seven thirty five point one? For media news, yes, what is that?
Which one, I'm sorry, what, where is it? Did you say, Susan?
Two of eight media news, $735.21. That's for our publication notices. Any publication notices we have, that's the paper that we use. Oh, that's
blue pass.
I haven't seen anything in the sun, sun, okay. Page four. All right, here, and actually, I'm gonna open it, page five, the road commission for open county, 2022 core program, $1,173.07 and $1,172.8 cents. What is that?
That's chlorate they put on the dirt roads.
Dirt roads, okay, thank you. Uh, page four, Nico Incorporated Concrete Approach Sidewalk and Floor, what?
That was work that was done for, we had to get two pads, pull it poured out here by the garden because we have two memorial benches, they have to be put on them.
Okay.
We also had some, a driveway that had to be repaired for some work that was done, and then the EPS building had to have some cement poured in there because they had to have a pipe buried under the cement, and that was, had to be poured.
So that was the floor?
Uh huh, okay.
Page five, advanced lighting and sound, $13,287.
That's for the server for, um, the cable room.
Cable room.
And that's under the budget improvements.
With budget, we're under capital improvement.
Again, I would really encourage you to call prior to council meetings because these can all be answered very easily.
Right, I said I would do that when we get our packets on Thursday, and we haven't gotten our packets on Thursday.
You got your packets on Friday?
Is there any other expensive that? Any other things on the dispersment?
Uh, yes, go back to page one. Mileage for ICMA conference, $261.25, and charter township of, that's Milford.
I went to the Michigan Municipal Treasures Association, and I split a room with three other people, or two other people, so there were three of us, so that's a third of my room that Milford paid for, and I had to, I had to pay them my third back, and then also the conference was at Crystal Mountain, so if it's under my name, I had to have mileage for my going to night shift.
It's not, it's not under your name?
If it's under ICMA.
That was for me going to the ICMA conference in Columbus, Ohio, which I drove to rather than flying, and it is part of my training that is allowed in my contract.
Right, I know, we, I, we had talked about, um, having city council approve the trainings just so that we, you know, know what the things are for, and
I don't think so, my contract does not cover that at all.
Right, so can we?
You cannot modify my contract without my permission, without working out that with me first.
Something that we discussed prior, I just would like to ask you, when people go to conferences, would it be possible to come back and report to city council?
No, it would not.
To let us know what
That is something that, when it is a staff member, it is something that they come to me, and I oversee all staff. Everybody here except for the city attorney. They do not report to council at all. This is something that gives them training on their job that they do, and for me, I did report in my weekly update to you, or my monthly update to you, about training that I went to in Columbus and different benefits that I found from that. That is training that is allowed through my contracts, which you have a copy of.
Thank you, is there any more dispersment?
I, I'm just trying to be transparent for residents, that's all. It's, it's resident dollars that are paying for all these things. When I ask these questions, I'm asking them because residents need to know.
What residents are asking these questions?
With all due respect, this is something, when it comes to the trainings, especially from the city manager, we did go through this, and this is to be transparent with the residents. We did go through this for the actual contract regarding training. All of us are able to go to a training, we're actually going to a training tomorrow for the MML, and so I just, you know, I'm not really sure where we're going with this, so.
Training is something that's beneficial to everybody.
For everyone to be updated. So is there anything else that is on the dispersment report that you would like to speak about?
I understand training is very important.
Okay, so now take a motion for just the, for the
No limit on anything, so that was my concern previously.
You said there's no limit, there is a limit on things, it's in the budget, Karen, that is what you need to look at.
Thanks, Susan.
You're welcome, Karen.
I do need a copy.
Okay, okay, so if we can go ahead and have a motion for the approval of the dispersment. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved, I get roll call please.
Councilmember Miller? Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We are to our actual request for consideration of approval, first up is the PUD, number one development agreement with Panera Bread. Who has been in this in that. As you have all been eagerly meeting, um, we have our settlement agreement. For consideration, I do have, we do have representatives from turnout company here with us, as well as online, and we also have representatives from Panera, here that are able to answer any questions you may have, but as you know, the planning commission has approved their site plan, and we are, we're working for a couple months now on the hammering up final details for the planned development agreement that accompanies the development of Panera, a former paint site on Southwood Road, so. I hope you've all had an opportunity to review this. Myself and city administrator Matt Negro and the city attorneys, we've all reviewed that, and I think that this captures the discussion and concerns that were brought up in the meetings with the planning commission, as well as discussions that we had internally as working on the agreement, and so, um, it's my sincere help. Needs to approve this settlement agreement so we can get on with the construction of the building. Thank you. Do I have someone that would like to make the motion to the state of
Yeah.
I mean, or didn't you just do it?
Motion to approve PUD number one, Panera Bread PUD development agreement for the new Panera Bread development located at 27777 Southfield Road, as submitted and authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign the related documents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for the PUD for the Panera, Panera Bread PUD development agreement. Roll call. Mayor Garrett? I'm sorry, that's wrong. There any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I would like to just say one thing, just express my thanks to both Suzie and to Scott for the number of hours that they put into the work on the PUD for DDA being involved in this, for planning commission being involved in this, for, for all entities and for share now company and Panera Bread. You know, being able to tap forth, this is our first PUD trial by fire, I guess, as you can say, but a lot of work went into this, so thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fine.
I'm excited. Next up, I want to have the consideration for approval for the first reading of the ethics ordinance instead of public hearing date.
But actually, unless the council is desired to have a public hearing, there's no requirement for a public hearing on this ordinance, it would just be the first in the second readings.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So this will be just for
So this, tonight, the motion would be to accept the first reading of the ethics ordinance and schedule the second reading for the November 28th.
Like to take a motion? I'll make the motion to get my reading on together. Sorry. I'll make the motion to accept the final draft, just not the final though, so correct, this is going to be the first, the first reading of the ethics ordinance, and we're not going to set a public hearing, so let's change this whole motion around and say it accepts the first reading of the ethics ordinance.
Thank you.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next one is the service line material identification recommendation.
So as you see, that's in the packet, this is a recommendation that has come from the infrastructure study group. A lot of work has gone into water service line identification. You know, some of this obviously stems from Prince Water Crisis, and now everybody in the state that provides a water system to their community is required to go through and identify what those lines are. If there are lines that are lead, we are required to replace those. However, we need to know the number of that, so there's two different things here, the recommendation, in order to facilitate the remaining 1,142 required service line material identifications, while trying to be as physically responsible as possible, is a two-track approach. First is increasing the self-testing compliance rate. We have had some success with that, but it's something that we need to really muster along on to get people to take pictures to identify the insides in their basement or wherever the, the meter comes into their home, so that we can see if that meter connection inside the home is a lead service line, a copper service line, whatever that may be, that will help us rather than having to have somebody physically go in there. And the recommendation is that, you know, administration really needs to kick this into effort as quickly as possible to do an extra education campaign to help understand, or help residents understand that if they do that testing, it saves the city money, it stops somebody else having to come into their homes, so it's something that they can do to help the city out. The second would be to secure a contractor for in-home testing, and, you know, while we hope that everybody would be willing to participate in this, it just, you know, we have to be realistic in that too and realize that that's not going to happen, so the other recommendation there is to hire somebody to come and do that testing so that they are vetted by the city, that they are identified, you know, whether they, they have their, whatever we can give them a badge identification, there you go, identify, I couldn't think of that word, identification, there you go. Something that shows that they are indeed working with the city to go into the homes and make that identification of what those lines are. It's very important for us to be in compliance with what the state is requiring, it's not just Lathrop Village that's going through that, it is every community that has a water service system in their community that they have to identify that, and the deadline to do all of that is by December 31st of 2024, so it is coming upon us, and the recommendation is to put both of those in parallel together so that we can get as much done in a short order as possible, so those are the recommendations before you.
And the recommendation, and this is from the infrastructure committee, and all members of the infrastructure committee signed off on this.
They did, and again, they are just a recommending board, they did a lot of light work on this, which is appreciated, but they cannot make any expenditures of money themselves, they can only bring to council what they believe the next logical step would be, and encourage that step to be taken, so this is what they have brought before council.
Okay, thank you. Do I like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. So I will make a motion to adopt the service line material recommendation and to direct the city administrator to begin its implementation immediately.
Is there a second?
Second?
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
At our August 8 meeting, Susan, you said that there would be no city council members chairing committees? That has still continued, what's the, what's the plan for making that change?
Um, I think because the thought is that there's these are the only remaining items basically on, outside of the the water loss study that we're still waiting, which ties to the meter replacement, whether or not the recommendation will be to go ahead with meter replacement. Once that's completed, the infrastructure committee will be dissolved after that.
Before the rest of the road program is finished.
Yes, because city administration oversees that, it's not something that the infrastructure committee, that again, they did a lot of the light work on that going forward, that light work has been done and completed, and now these projects are well underway, so it is a safe time to be able to disband that once these remaining projects are completed.
And was Gipps Webster involved in creating this recommendation?
They were at the meeting, but they did not create this recommendation, it is something that has been put together. There's back and forth with the discussion, but it is not written by Gipps Webster.
No, I asked if they were involved.
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's part of the FOIA requesting, still waiting to see.
And when you pay for that, you will receive
To oversee these interest.
And when you pay for that FOIA question, you will see that, when you pay for that, you will receive that.
Any more discussion?
Yes, I have a question. What does the self-test look like for a resident?
Um, it's basically you go in and you identify where your meter comes in at, and you take a picture of it, and what your pipes look like, and then you send that into the city so that we can take a look at that. That way somebody doesn't have to come into your home, and our work crews, DPW, Gipps Webster, whomever is looking at those photos can determine whether or not your pipe is a lead service line or not, and Suzie may have more.
And are they going to be physical photos? You want them to be, bring them in, email them in, text them in, how do you want to receive these photos?
So there's actually, we'll make sure we get it out, I know it's out there.
It's on the website.
And that'll be part of that education component with it too.
There is a QR code that you can scan, there's a little bit more than just taking a picture, preferably a digital picture that's uploaded as part of the self-test is perfect because then it gets uploaded into our GIS system. There's a magnet test, and there is a, a fresh test, but I actually just wrote down, we should do a PSA, so maybe we could have Have you done self-identification test yet? It could be our PSA.
I could do it.
Again, awesome.
I had a thought too, just for words, I remember a long time ago, publisher clearly used to send you a dollar a survey, you fill it out and send it back.
I remember a penny.
Yeah, so what if we, because it would cost $30 to $50 to have someone come in, and what if we incentivized it, people that return a completed self-test kit get a $10 shop local gift card for, for the holiday market, or something along those lines that not only supports local business, but also encourages compliance.
Like that idea. I think there's gotta be
A gas card?
A happy, a happy
Yes, yes.
That's a good idea.
But I like the idea of
Absolutely, that gets people.
The other piece too, perhaps when someone does do it, if they are, it's acknowledged that their information wasn't received, and then perhaps they can share them with other than
People, I believe, and I, I don't know for certain, but I believe that there's some sort of automated, thank you for doing your test, but if not, I'm speaking at that, certainly seems like something that we have the capability of adding to that survey.
And what's your threshold of participation? Obviously you want 100%, but
We are obligated
We have to do every single one of them, yeah, so if we don't get the self-testing done, then we will have to go into the homes to do it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, the water system technology upgrade recommendation.
So this is more on our technology side of this, currently our readers, we have to send guys out that have to do this work for us to collect the reads, it ties up their work. It ties up work here at the city, and if we replace that technology with the handheld receivers, or I'm sorry, that's, it spends two days doing that, if we put in new transmitters, it will help us to be able to pick up more of the, or pick up all of the the reads instantaneously, it also requires putting in two towers, I believe, as part of that recommendation, and there is a small gap area in the city, just the way the city is built, but rather than having to read 1,500 homes individually, it may be 200 homes that we do, and this is a technology that is updatable, or it, it will, if we choose to go with new meters, it will work in conjunction with those new meters, so the infrastructure, I can't speak tonight, the infrastructure group, their recommendation, first of all, the reasons why they're choosing to go ahead with doing an RFP for the technology upgrades is that $860,000 was already allocated in the capital improvements fund for water meter replacement and technology upgrades. Of that amount, $120,000 was scheduled for technology upgrades, which is what this is, and according to the estimate by our existing supplier, the actual cost of the system is, is very much in line with that, and there is an additional software license fee of $7,000 per year, but it's, it's covered by the savings that you will see from, you know, people not having to drive around, it'll eliminate 24 days a year that DPW has to go out and get these reads, so they're able to focus on other things in the city rather than having to go out and grab these reads. It would save another $2,900 a year because all of the data would be available at the push of a button. You can also track if there are leaks, it, it really helps you see that water use that is out there, customer service, people would be able to go online and look and see their own bills, and be able to look at what is happening with their bills on a regular basis. It would improve cash flow, and it's just something that overall, we need to do differently, and the money has been bonded with that anticipation of having that technology upgraded, so the request is to do an RFP for those services and bring that back to council once that RFP has been bid upon, and or the proposals have been received and bring that back for council to make a determination who they would like to go with. Anything further on that, Suzie?
Uh, no, I think that pretty much captured that.
Thank you.
Anyone like to make a motion? A motion.
I'll make a motion. Motion to adopt the water technology recommendation and Motion to adopt the water technology recommendation and to direct. The city administrator to release the associate RFP by December second.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any additional discussion?
What is the percentage of residents that pay the minimum bill, that sixty-six dollars, or when do they use it or not?
I believe the sixty-six dollars is the ready-to-serv fee, isn't it?
You don't know how many residents are. At one point I thought there was a pretty large number of residents that are. Paying that minimum amount, don't know. I was just wondering how this is, if if what I was told previously that there are a large number of. Residents paying that, how is this going to impact? Those those residents, I mean, I know it's about being able to manage your water better, but. When you're on that plan, I mean, I think, you know, I'm one person living in the house pays that much a month and. No matter what I do, I I can't lower my bill, so how was how was that the piece, you know, about. Being able to, you know, better manage your water.
I think the benefit is that DPS will be able to do other services that they're currently tied up. Twenty-four days a year going around and and gathering the water billing information, gathering the water reads. That will be something that will be. It will no longer be needed in that necessity, what takes them two days now may take four hours to do a month. To do the reads because they just have to go to one area to pick up those reads additionally. And I got distracted, where was I going with that, sorry. I don't know where I was going with that. Send out the light. Oh, the other thing I was going to say is that with this technology. People will be able to see their water usage on a regular basis every day, so you can determine. If if you notice that you've got spikes in your water usage, maybe you have a leaky toilet. We in my home have discovered that our pipes inside of our house are very old and the copper tubing has started to. I forget the technical term, but it's getting little pinholes in it and it's spraying through. Into the ceilings and it's a pain to replace, but you don't notice that when it's very slow, but you pay higher water bills. Because of that, so if all of a sudden you have a spike in your water usage with this kind of technology, people can track their own water usage. And they can determine, ooh, you know, I must, I better go make sure so-and-so flush or, you know, jiggle the toilet handle or I need to get that fixed. Or I've got a line that drips, I need to get that fixed because now I can track. That's a benefit even to somebody that is one person in a house. You know, if something's going on in their home, they would be able to track that and get that taken care of, so that would be a savings to them.
Right, and I was gonna say now, it's a month later before we even know that they had a leak in their house because there's no way of us detecting it.
Yep.
Up front where this is real time and we would be able to run a report daily to tell us if there were leaks and if somebody spiked real high. So we could be able to, you know, get ahold of the residents quicker than to have, you know, a month or two months go by before they contact us. Or before we have any information.
There was a lady in another community that I was in that went to Florida for the winter. And nobody knew that one of the pipes burst in her basement until it flooded and came out the windows of the basement. How how long would that water have had to run, you know, and at that point they were billing quarterly in that community. So that that's a lot of money, you know, and and if it's something that you run, you can automate that to run a daily report. That shows you if you have those spikes, that would be caught just like that.
Yeah, the same thing happened here at the house, that it was coming out the windows and maybe I've caught it during the night.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, what is the plan now for not yet to to communicate with residents when if you do see a spike like that and how would that?
I think at the point in time when an RFP is done and a company has been chosen to go and do that. Educating the community, you know, that somebody's going to have to come and put this this. Do them, I, that's the part where I'm confused because I'm newer to this, I don't believe that the the meters currently have. Well, they have where you drive by with the read, so the tower will ping that to be able to pick that up. But it's sending that educational component out to the community so that they realize you have the ability to. You know, go in and see that.
And with the meters we have now, I think it's only ninety-seven percent. That it will pick up where if we put the meters in, we would have closer to a hundred percent where we would be able to pick up that information. But some of the older meters are not going to have the technology that this is going to be able to pick up, so that's going to be another. A component to the whole thing, but if we can get at least most of them on starting where we can get people to finally. Or we can find these quicker, that would help a lot of residents.
So we're going to have to replace all the meters in the system to be.
No, that's, that's not what we're saying right now, what we're saying is that. The meters that are in place, the majority of them already have that. Reading technology when they drive by and do the automatic read, but they have to drive by with a handheld read. So putting those towers in, they would ping or the the towers would ping to those to pick those up, except for a very small percentage. And then that's the area where we would drive around and collect those reads and that would probably be the first focus. If council does decide. In the future to replace those meters through the. The bid or the the bond process.
That was my understanding when I was at the meeting, it's a two-part process, the first is to do the. Whatever that tower thing is, and then the second to see how it's working.
Yep, and then make that recommendation going off from there.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. City administrator report.
Oh, let's see, I have a report in here, I have upcoming session dates on here for you guys of study sessions. And council meetings and council development in both session. And that I wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that city hall is now open during lunch. We have had an increase of people coming at lunchtime as they're starting to recognize that. And also that administrative offices will be closed on November eighth during the elections. And that city hall is closed on Friday, November eleventh and observance of Veterans Day. Leaf collection begins this week and will end the week of December second. And elections are on November eighth. We did hire a new police officer, Michael Stich. I have to stop and think, I wrote sty and itch, stich on there to remember how to say his name. The police body worn camera program is going very well. We did receive a grant to pay for fifty percent of that, magazine put a lot of work into that, it's also going to pay. His associated costs, his time that he's put into it and we track that for two years, I believe, is what I put in here. On Saturday, October twenty-second, from ten AM to two PM is the gun buyback event. That is located at Saint David's Episcopal Church on Southfield and it's posted with. Between Lether Village Police and Southfield Police Departments and there's information on the website about that. Southfield Fire Department will be doing their fire flow tests at fifteen to twenty different locations throughout the city. And hopefully that will be running over the next two weeks, weather dependent. We still do have an open position for a code enforcement officer. And gate valve replacements are coming along, we are still working to get those done. Queered and pipe placement installation. There are eight to ten sections to be done, water main installations are continuing and. Any of the punch list items that have not been completed yet should be getting addressed. I know that there are people that are calling, asking if they're going to get done. If grass is going to be placed down, any of that work, so. If, you know, we're we're pushing as hard as we can to get that done this year, but if it is not addressed this year, it will be addressed in the spring. So don't fear about that, I know that there are some driveway approaches that only had the first lift of the asphalt put into them, so. That is something that we are pushing the contractors to make sure that they get that second lift in so that it's not an issue for. Homeowners to be able to get in and out of their own driveways. There are some upcoming events that are going on through DDA, I really encourage you to take a look at the city website. If you haven't signed up for the e-newsletter, I encourage you to do that because there's a lot of information that is on there. And that's about all that I have, other than I will be working. Probably most of tomorrow, I may scoot out a little bit early, but I'm heading to Muskegon for the M M L annual convention. And Bruce and Kelly will also be attending that, it's a great learning opportunity, training event for. Managers and council members and city staff to attend. So I'm I'm happy that at least two of you are coming and appreciate that and. Training is something that is very important because it helps us all to be able to do our jobs better and to be able to bring back. Ways to be able to meet the needs of communities, it helps us look through things through a little bit different lens, but it's always great to be able to hone in on your skillset. So that's all that I have, if you have any other questions, let me know.
Thank you. City attorney.
Nothing for me this evening. You've heard the attorney's talk for long enough now, earlier.
Agree. Any reports from boards, commissions or committees? We come to the part of public comments, speakers are limited to three minutes and you can speak on whatever you need to speak on. If you are on Zoom, raise your hand, I come off mute. If you're in the audience, please come to the microphone. Anyone for public comment? I don't see any hands up on Zoom, no one's walking to the podium table. So next will be the mayor and council comments. And I don't have any. Public correspondence or. So I will pass it to council, you want to council, have any comments or final thoughts?
Aren't we doing our quarterly books anymore that we send out to residents with all the information in it? Yeah, our town.
Any plans? That falls in my lap and I have not gotten to that yet, so I know that that's something that everybody enjoys and and I am working to get to that. But I I have not made that there yet.
Anything else? Anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, the June thirteen, I asked for a list of what smart money can be used for when we. We're talking about transferring that money to Southfield for the TOS program. I have not seen any list and also we were supposed to be updating receiver ports about how that was going and. And I haven't, and it was supposed to be marketing and stuff, I haven't seen anything on that. Also, I have passed several times for documentation backing up. Where the city paid part of the special assessment, this bridge of programs. El Dorado Place was removed for tonight, but that will be coming back before us and I've asked, it's been said that. The city has done this multiple times, but I would like to see the information about where that has gone because. The precedent, I, you know, I'd always believed was that residents pay, that the city didn't pay for it.
That's it? Oh, okay, well, I will take a motion to adjourn. It's been moved in second and you all have a very good night.